Okay, we'd like to welcome everybody to the regular meeting of the Cambridge City Council here November tenth at City Hall at eighty South Superior Street. We'll begin with a pledge of allegiance, and if you could lead us in that.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll make a motion to approve the current agenda in the minutes of October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, and payments of the bill.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item two, HECO engineers' report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is the status report for number ten of this year. There are a couple items on the list. First item is on page one, item A on transportation streets and roads, L. Rip, number fourteen, sorry, number twelve through fourteen. So the final plans, specs, specifications, and cost estimate was submitted to the city on October twenty-third of this year. The advertisement for bids was submitted to the city on October twenty-eighth. And HECO uploaded the final plans and specs to Quest CBN and to inform AGC on November third of this year. Second item is on page two, item D, Transportation Alternatives Program TAP. Item five, the twenty-twenty-six TAP application for the city indicated sidewalks on State Highway seventy-one is underway. The next item is on page five, seven twenty-five wastewater system. The draft fiscal year twenty-five clean water loan LOI is underway. And HECO's plan to submit the draft LOI before the next council meeting. The last item is on water system, on page six, item eleven. The draft fiscal year twenty-seven drinking water loan LOI is underway. And as well, HECO plans to submit the draft before the next city council for approval, before the January final submitted. That's all I got for you, Mayor and Council.
Okay, are there any questions for Robert? Okay, thank you, Robert. Okay, item three, Transportation Alternatives Program TAP.
So, Robert kind of reported on him. We asked HECO to look at doing something on TAP again. We've finished all of our phases on Highway ninety-five. We were able to do just with some extra money, a little section on Highway seventy-one. But because the funding was moved up a year, we're actually able to apply this year for a TAP project in the future rather than having to wait until next year. And so we're, we wanted to make sure that the council and the mayor wanted to move forward with doing a TAP application for sidewalks on seventy-one, finishing up the spots that aren't done properly and stuff. And that has to be in, I believe, in January sometime.
January fifteenth.
Yeah, and so it'll be hopefully something in application to approve next month at the meeting. But Cory's not here tonight, but I did have him show you the section of Highway seventy-one that would be in the project. And he had some pictures that he also submitted. And I believe he walked the project with the mayor, if the mayor wants to.
Actually, we never walked it, but...
You just talked about it?
Yeah, we continued on from where it ends at the park. Go past the LDS church there, it's done there. And then we'd continue on from there up to the elementary school. So we had solid sidewalks all the way up. And then any money that we had left over, we'd go across the street and fix any damaged sidewalk that roots have pushed up or whatever down the other side. So that's our goal, is to make sure all those sidewalks are nice and smooth so we can ride our skateboards.
But in our application, I believe we were going to apply for, you know, both sides of it. And then when we, if we get funded and go out for design, then we can decide specifics then, if we have to change anything, is that right?
Yep.
So what do we need tonight? Action item.
Yeah, I put it down in case you wanted to...
Say that we're supportive of it.
Yeah, that HECO...
I'll make a motion to support the TAP funding application for seventy-one.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, item four, Idaho Gym Grant, Lake Sinclair.
I just wanted to report on this because at the last meeting, we hadn't started on the project yet. We were still waiting to hear from the gym grant and to get things through. And we did find out and we got things immediately in motion before it was too cold and before we couldn't get pavement anymore. So actually, the project on the gym grants completed. You had invoices on your bills tonight from the contractors, and they were the same as the proposal was. And so I know that there's been some questions in town exactly how they got their alley paved. So I wanted to explain again how that was. The gym grant paid for eighty percent of the project. Blake Sinclair paid for twenty percent of the project. The city paid with dollar, real cash, nothing of the project. It was only the administration for me to apply for the grant and administer the grant. So I'm just, we're paying the bills and I'm, then I'll finalize stuff up to get reimbursed from the grant. So anyway, it, it looks good, and I think it's been very helpful.
Yeah, it's awesome.
I've heard a lot of comments and stuff, how nice it is for some of the bigger areas.
And those gym grants are available all the time? Or did that just show up, or just...
No, they're available all the time, but they're only for economic development. And to do this gym grant, we had to prove that there was a big enough economic benefit to the community. And it's administered by the state, but it, you know, they, they want to see how much economic benefit it is and stuff. So it's not just, I know I had another request and they wanted the dollar behind their house paved. It's like, well, if you want me to apply for a grant, you're going to have to show me the economic benefit of that, you know? But it's an economic development grant, and it's done on quarters, and you can apply for any quarter. Weezer's gotten a couple over the years. This is the first time Cambridge has ever got one. Well, that's not true. I believe there was one that went with the Salubria Center in a combination with another grant, when the Salubria Center was built.
Putting those streetlights in, come under a gym grant? That'd be...
Probably not.
And a development for, light it up for the kids?
Yeah, but I think the, the goal is that it's...
It's got to be business development.
Yeah, it's a, it's a joint venture between the city and a, and a business.
And it's only for infrastructure.
Yeah.
But...
Okay. Item five, America Two Fifty, Cambridge. Cara and Kyra Lincoln are here to give us a presentation.
For those of you who don't know me, my name is Cara Lincoln, and I am part of the Midvale Schools FCC LA Word. FCC LA stands for Family Career Community Leaders of America. And this group will help me put together a walking two fifty challenge. The reason I want to put together a walking two fifty challenge is because I feel this would be a good way to celebrate America Two Hundred and Fifty anniversary. And I feel like this would encourage our community members to get outside, explore our community and its history and unique landscapes. And I also feel like this would be promoting a healthy lifestyle. To help participants stay focused on two hundred and fifty miles as we want and stay motivated, is we have created a list of areas that are a must. The challenge begins on April first and ends on June fifteenth. Each participant who completes the challenge will receive an America Two Fifty t-shirt and a certificate that will be presented by Mayor Loveland and at the community breakfast on July fourth. We will also be using an app called Step Up. This app costs no money, and this helps track steps of the participants so that they can know where they're at. And we will be working with Wendy Aker's Design Shop in Cambridge to design the participants' t-shirts. And the cost per t-shirt will be twenty-five dollars. And our goal is to have fifty to a hundred participants in Cambridge, Midvale, Indian Valley areas. I will be designing the participants' certificate and have Deidre V. marketing and design for them. The cost per certificate will be one dollar. Mayor Loveland will sign certificates. The total cost of this project will be twenty-five, or two thousand five hundred twenty-five, if a hundred people participate. A few examples of, on our must-see list are Cambridge, Idaho Star-Coms Walking Tour, Louisiana River Trail, Hell's Canyon Speedway, and Salubria Cemetery. On July fourth, after we've done the Walk Two Fifty, we'll be hosting a community breakfast that will take place from eight-thirty AM to ten o'clock AM. The breakfast will be located at the Cambridge Community Water Tower. And there will be a flag raising, a flag raising in prayer will take place for our breakfast. At nine AM, patriotic song will be played, and a shark speech will be given by the mayor or, or council members for t-shirts and certificates are presented to America Two Fifty walking participants. The city of Cambridge will create a flyer that will encourage tenants to bring donations for our local food pantry. The goal is to collect a minimum of two hundred and fifty items for our food pantry. The city of Cambridge will purchase pancake mix, eggs, sausage, bacon, ash browns, fruit, and orange juice with, and fruit. The city will ask churches in the Cambridge community to prepare and serve food provided. The city anticipates of having a hundred and ten these, but this will be prepared for a hundred and fifty. The cost of food and supplies will be around one thousand five hundred dollars. And this, because I'm also part of FCC LA, and if you don't know me, my name's Cara. And for my project this year, I'm focusing on getting more involved in the Hell's Canyon Jam. But with that, I decided that I wanted to help do two hundred and fifty hours of volunteer service per person. I feel that this is a need because statistics have proven that volunteering has decreased over the years. And I feel that volunteering has decreased over the years. So how that'll work is I will have nonprofit organizations, they have their volunteering needed in all their activities. So what I've been doing is having sign-up sheets, basically getting to the volunteering activities. And I don't know how many hours they're going to be there. So they'll just sign that in, and give them close to the two hundred and fifty hours. And the participants will be acknowledged during the Hell's Canyon Jam that day. And that's how I'm involved in this.
Okay, great, thank you. Two hundred and fifty miles, wow.
There's a math, you have to walk three miles per day, which is eight thousand steps.
Okay, so that, that makes it doable. I'm glad you broke that down, because I just got done with the mayor's walking challenge, and you had to walk ten thousand steps a day.
Did you make it?
Start getting to be an old geezer like me. Takes a lot of effort. So anyway, so eight thousand steps a day. So I think you should promote it like that. Eight thousand steps a day, anybody can do that. That's great.
That's intimidating.
Yeah, it's not so intimidating.
The reason we did April first to June fifteenth is because it would not keep people's attention span, because it'd be brought up too long, everybody loses interest.
Can I start on January first? Okay.
So one thing on the America Two Fifty is those are approximate costs that she was talking about. We applied for America Two Fifty grant. The total grant we applied for, the maximum we could apply for through the state, was twenty-five hundred dollars. And so we were hoping to split it between the programs, but if we're, depends how many people participate and stuff, there might be a small amount, maybe the city will need to pick up, depending if, if we get the grant, or if they're, you know, if a lot of people participate. Which would be a good thing.
Yeah. Thank you, ladies. Keep surprised how things are going and how we can help. Okay? Anybody else have any questions on that?
All explained.
Okay. Okay, we'll move on to item six, report on city elections. Deputy clerk.
Uh, we have two new council members. Hayden Bull ran uncontested. And for the two seats that were open with three different candidates, Levi Harrison and Taylor Powell won those two seats. So come January one, you get to retire. And, yeah. And Taylor and Levi will be serving. So we'll see some new faces this year, it's coming here.
Great, that'll be exciting.
And Hayden wouldn't, would have been here, but he's, he already knew when he ran that he would be in Arizona at this time and stuff.
Oh, he's hunting, isn't he?
Yeah, so, but I did send him the agenda in a packet so he could start getting familiar with things.
Okay, good. Okay, item seven, cash management. City clerk.
So, I don't know if you read your phasing out the penny article that I had in your packet. But everyone knows that pennies were, are not made anymore. They quit making them in February. There's starting to be a shortage of them. Even the co-op has a deal out on Facebook about a penny shortage for them. And if you have extra ones, they're willing to buy your pennies and whatever type of thing right now. So that's one reason we want to look at cash management. And a lot of city clerks are talking about what type of policies to have on it, to how, do you not give exact change? That's kind of like what the co-op says, they, they may or may not give you exact change. Or is there a way that we can make our rates so you don't have to worry about pennies, which with some of our rate structure would be quite hard, because it's like one and a half times, and you can't have a nickel?
I was in the grocery store in Reggins the other day, and they had a breakdown of how that's going to happen when there is no penny, and how the rounded up or rounded down will happen. And I should have took a picture of it or something, I just kind of went, oh, great, but...
So that's part of our cash management concerns. But one thing that we'd like to propose to the council that might alleviate the penny deal completely is we take in very little cash right now. And we only probably have maybe a dozen people that pay in cash every month. And when they pay in cash, because we don't have a bank in town, we get a money order to be able to deposit the cash like a, a check and go to the post office to do that. But we always usually wait until we have enough cash to make it worth paying for a money order to do that. We don't do it every day. So we can't make deposits as timely as we'd like to, because we kind of wait on the cash aspect of it, just from those few. So we would like to propose possibly not taking any cash and letting those people that do pay in cash get their own money orders. Because basically, we're paying the money order fee on their cash as it is right now.
Legally refused, legal tender?
I believe so, yeah. There's some cities that don't.
Do you have a rental business where they don't take cash?
No.
I have. When you're traveling, they just say, sorry, we don't take cash.
Really?
Oh, yeah.
Any concert you go to now?
Yeah, Walmart.
You go to BSU to an event, you don't use cash anywhere if you go to BSU at a, to an event. You can't buy a hot dog with cash.
About the same way with Walmart, they don't let you take cash.
I guess I ought to get...
If you write a check, you write a check, they give it back to you after they process it.
I send my daughter to do the shopping.
So if we went to not taking cash, it would alleviate, alleviate the penny deal, because whatever is paid is going to be to the exact penny, because it's going to be all electronic.
Or round the bill out to the closest nickel.
You don't have, well, the problem is one and a half times, that doesn't work. If you live outside the city limits, it doesn't work.
Yeah.
So currently, what do we accept for payment, other than cash?
Money orders, checks, or debit or credit cards.
Can you do Venmo or anything like that?
Yeah.
Do we have the capability of going to that level? That looks likely.
I'm not, I'm not... Yes, yes, we could do that. Do we want to do that? No.
I was going to say...
Okay. It's one more source you have to track, and so it's a, a different login, and then you have to track it. And so we have to import the Venmo payments into our accounting system. And then you have to, for bank reconciliation, it would be a nightmare.
Because you'd have a whole different reconciliation to do.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I would prefer that we just receive checks.
Credit or check?
And if somebody wants to pay with cash, then all they have to do is go to the post office like we do and get a money order. And then just bring us a money order. But that takes that fee from us having to pay it, and then they would be paying it. So you technically still have the option to pay with cash, you just have to put it into money order form.
And we, and there's already a fee if they're on the portal doing ACH or a credit card. So it's no different for those people having to get a money order. Probably costs them less, actually.
The cheapest way to pay is to do an ACH through the portal, because you pay a dollar ninety-five fee no matter what payment is. If you do a credit card, then you pay a percentage based on what credit card you're using. And a money order typically runs two, two dollars and fifty-five cents.
But if you don't want a fee of any kind, you can just do a paper check.
That is correct.
But someday, that's going to probably be going away.
It will be someday. Some places won't accept the check.
So is this something we want to try to accomplish by January first or something like that?
Yes. Well, we'd need your approval, and then we, it would probably be good to, you know, give everyone a good warning and stuff the next couple months, that effective January first or something.
Del Ray, did you hear that conversation?
Most of it.
How do you feel about that?
Uh, what is it? Do you, do you, do you pay for, for your fees as a city? Do you pay for it?
Yeah, if you, if you normally pay your water and sewer bill with cash, you have to go get a money order, because we're not going to accept cash anymore.
Okay, well, I'm always, I always pay for it by check anyway.
Perfect.
I do, too. But that's going to stop one day, I believe.
So, anyway. How's the board feel about that?
I agree.
Okay, so we entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to stop accepting cash and recommend give some to January first.
Yes, of January first.
As the changeover date, and that gives time for people to be warned.
Well, second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All in favor? Any opposed?
Aye, aye.
Are you opposed or in favor? Del Ray?
I, I am in favor.
In favor, okay. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, item eight, procedure for council member packets. City clerk.
Alrighty, well, since we're updating everything right now, this is something most cities have gone to a long, long time ago, but I know that there's some people that, you know, it's not, hasn't been as easy for. But we would like to go to electronic packets instead of paper packets. And the mayor tried out an electronic packet this time and stuff. And we would like those to be sent to, an email. Because of public records law and stuff, it would be better to be sent to a city email and not to your personal email, then you can keep things separated. And so we would make a new email for each of you. And the packets would be sent there.
I won't even want to...
Yeah. If there's, you know, I don't know if, you know, like, the mayor brought his own laptop if people had laptops to bring. We don't necessarily have an extra laptop here, or if the city wanted to buy something, but we could. But the problem is, it's only used once a month, that makes it a little bit hard. Or they could go through it, and if there was a certain, they needed to print it out or something, maybe we could do it that way. I'm not sure, but we would...
That would work. Did you mention that? I was lost, I was lost in my electronics.
But it would save a lot of time and money. We wouldn't have to deliver packets, we wouldn't have to do all this printing, and wouldn't have to cut down quite as many trees.
I think it's a good idea.
It is, if you've got a printer.
Well, you don't need a printer, you just need a laptop.
And you could technically look at it all on your phone, too, it's just a little bit harder.
Donna?
What if you don't have one?
Have one what?
A laptop.
You can use your phone.
Well, this would just be for council members.
Yeah.
Yeah, but if somebody doesn't own a council, it doesn't...
We could deal with that, yeah, we could deal with that issue as it comes, too. Most people, most people nowadays have a portable device of some sort.
And Levi has a phone, and I know he has access to a computer at home, whether it's a laptop or not.
I surprisingly do a lot on my phone. I even read books on my phone.
So I do have it down as an action item.
Okay. Del Ray, did you hear that conversation?
No, it's not.
No, I didn't.
No, it's not actually.
That's right.
We were discussing...
I was just going to tell you how I'm going to do it.
Item, item number eight on our agenda, I don't know if you have that, you probably don't. But we were talking about, we were talking about procedures for council member packets. And we're trying to go electronic. So instead of getting your big packet of paper that you get, you'd have a laptop or a tablet of some sort that you could look at the agenda and everything that's on there. And so we're trying to go, trying to go electronic, trying to save some paper.
We do that.
Anyway, so it's just a, just a conversation that we're having right now. It's not on the agenda as an action item tonight, but I'm sure it will be next month.
Oh, I, you got problems with not the paper?
Yeah, we do. So anyway, as time progresses, will the clerks help me get mine set up? And so they'll help all of us get set up to where we can do that.
Okay, uh, how much longer will we go? Okay, uh, how much longer are we going to be in the event yet for tonight?
Oh, they're trying to get you off the telephone?
What kind of?
Yeah. Uh, we're, we're moving right along here. We'll hurry. Okay, thanks, Del Rey.
You're right.
Okay, let's move on to item nine. Cambridge City Council regular meeting dates. Um, I guess, some of those are pretty tight.
Yeah, some of them are. That's how, how they come out. The one, the only one that I made a change on is in June because of Hills Canyon Days. We moved it to the 10th, because the 8th is the soonest it can be in a month. And having Hills Canyon Days that weekend before for Brandy and I, it's going to be pretty impossible. Actually, the 10th is really going to be efficient.
But everything else is a regular.
But everything else is a, a second Monday.
Okay. So June's the only month. Okay. Everybody good with that?
I'll need a motion on that.
I need to make a motion to accept a meeting notice for next year.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 10, Washington County Fair Board request to waive part of building permit fees for the forty-by-one-hundred beef barn extension.
You want me to talk about?
Yeah, go ahead.
You were here today when it came on to, but, um, Washington County is, the Fair Board's trying to add on another beef barn, new beef barn. And they would like the council to consider waiving the city's part of the building permit fee. It's in the city limits, so even though it's on Washington County land, Washington County can't take care of it. Their building inspector just got certified this week, the new one that they hired, just for residential. He's not certified for commercial or anything yet. Anyway, and Washington County right now contracts with the same person that we do, so it'd be the same person doing it either way. But it technically has to go through the city. But they were wondering if the city would be willing, uh, I believe the building inspector gets seventy-five percent of the fee, and the city gets twenty-five percent of the fee. Willing, if we would be willing to waive our part of the fee on the building permit. And we've done this in the past with Washington County.
Yeah, we have. We'll make a motion to waive our part of the building fee.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, that we waive our portion of the fee. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, great. Item 11, ordinance number thirteen dash twenty-two-five, Cambridge area of city impact. Okay. Sandra, you're the best one to talk about this, too.
Well, hopefully, we finally got it done. The commissioners have approved it. I haven't seen that they've actually done an ordinance yet, which I believe they have to do an ordinance to officially change the boundaries for, for them. So hopefully, they're working on that. But in our ordinances, we've got to change the boundaries, too. And so the ordinance, the city attorney's drawn up, is just for the boundaries. It's not for how we're actually going to take care of the impact area, our proposal. Washington County has decided that they want to finish up the boundaries for Midvale and Weezer before they start talking about how things are going to be administered. So it'll probably be the first year before we get back to that conversation.
So we basically just need a motion to accept the new area of impact as approved by the county commissioners.
Well, it's an ordinance, so we need the whole scoop on their cheat sheet.
I'll make a motion to introduce and read ordinance number thirteen dash twenty-two-five by title only under suspension of rules and regulations.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Could I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Newman?
Aye.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Aye.
Councilmember Platt?
Cambridge City Ordinance Number Thirteen Dash Twenty-Twenty-Five. An ordinance of the City of Cambridge, Washington County, Idaho, amending Title I Administration, Cambridge City Code, Chapter Ten, Area of City Impact, Sections One Dash Ten Dash Two, Area of Impact Defined Map, Providing for an amended definition and map of the Cambridge area of city impact, and Providing that this ordinance be effective upon its passage, approval, and publication according to law. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and regulations and waive the second and third readings on ordinance number thirteen dash twenty-two-five.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Could I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Newman?
Aye.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Aye.
Councilmember Platt?
Aye.
Make a motion to pass ordinance number thirteen dash twenty-two-five under suspension of rules and regulations on one reading by title only.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Could I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Newman?
Aye.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Aye.
Councilmember Platt?
Item twelve, ordinance number twelve dash twenty-two-five, service stations.
When I was going through the ordinance book, um, on three-five-one, there's this whole section on service stations, and it only had one sentence, but it's something that we really don't want in it. It says, "No gasoline filling station or service station shall be placed in the street curb or on the sidewalks or curbs without first obtaining permission from the city council."
Why is that old?
Really old. So anyway, I asked the attorney if he could drop an ordinance to get rid of that, because that's something we wouldn't want to happen.
So they're just repealing it, not even, there's no correcting languages or anything?
No, just we're getting rid of it.
I'll make a motion to introduce and read ordinance twelve dash, did I get that right? Twelve dash twenty-two-five, um, by title only, under suspension of rules and regulations.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Could I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Newman?
Aye.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Aye.
Councilmember Platt?
Aye.
An or, or Cambridge City Ordinance Number Twelve Dash Twenty-Twenty-Five, An Ordinance of the City of Cambridge, Washington County, Idaho, Amending Title III Business and License Regulations, Cambridge City Code, Repealing Chapter Five Service Stations in its entirety, Repealing Ordinance Eight Dash Eighty-Two in its entirety, And Providing that this ordinance be effective upon its passage, Approval, and Publication according to law. Make a motion to suspend the rules and regulations and waive the second and third readings and vote on ordinance twelve dash twenty-two-five.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Could I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Newman?
Aye.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Aye.
Councilmember Platt?
Aye.
Make a motion to pass ordinance twelve dash twenty-two-five under suspension of rules and regulations on one reading by title only.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Could I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Newman?
Aye.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Aye.
Councilmember Platt? Well, Nan looks puzzled over there, so. After the discussion of last month's council meeting, Cory put together the parts of the different proposals that you had talked about. And one document requires a permit, the other document does not require a permit. That's basically the only difference between the two copies. And we would still need to put it into official ordinance form. But we wanted to make sure you, we've got things how you had talked about last week, and whether you wanted to permit or.
Whether you wanted to be permitted or not. Are there, is there an advantage one way or the other that the attorney felt would be, or he hasn't even seen it yet?
He hasn't seen it yet.
So do we feel there's an advantage one way or the other to have a permit or not? Where it's a temporary, temporary structure? Is it something that?
We've required them before.
The what?
We haven't required them before.
No, no, no. But it's something that, um, is something that Cory could just manage without getting tied up in permits?
Yeah, or, I mean, I don't know if you're going to put a fee with it, like you do an RV one or not, or just a small one, or, or not have a fee and just have a permit. But it would be good to have the knowledge of what's going on, so they know, we know when it starts and when it stops, you know? That, you know, five years later maybe isn't temporary, you know?
Yeah, that would be.
I like my temporary fixes at home that are there for twenty years.
But what I understood from Cory, there's some pros and cons to having a permit and not having a permit, so.
What's your thoughts, Jean?
Well. Comes to those con, conicses is what they're talking about mainly. If it's under two hundred square foot, why? You can put there, put it there permanent, I guess. Because you can build a shed without a permit under two hundred foot.
Yeah, but I think we're talking about the ones that are bigger than that.
Yeah, the ones that are bigger should have a permit.
Del Rey, how do you feel about that? If somebody puts a big container out somewhere for a temporary building structure to house their tools or whatever, should we have a permit on it, or just have Cory manage it?
I think it, it would be a simple thing, just have Cory manage it. Of course, that makes it, some people get mad at the city, but, uh, let's do the fast one, and then when we have to go further, we can, we can later on.
If we actually, if we actually wrote out a permit, even if it was a minimal fee like five or ten dollars, the permit would have dates on it, so there would be no argument about how long it's been there temporarily.
Okay.
Yeah, I like that idea. Just a minimal fee, so they don't have documentation. To prove. It gives us our proof.
Okay, so we just need to, if everybody agrees on that, we just need to send it to the attorney, or?
Yeah, and then also, we'll have to, if you're wanting a fee, we'll have to do a resolution on the fee.
Okay.
So do you have a proposal on the fee? As far as an amount to, it can be changed? Okay.
Is that a ten-dollar fee?
Yeah, it'd be all right, yeah.
And Cory can generate a form that we can use? That has all the pertinent information on it?
Okay, so I'll have the attorney help us come up with the ordinance, and we'll work on a permit application, a permit, and a resolution for the fee.
Yeah. Motion.
Oh, do we need more?
Have it.
Do you need a motion, Sandra, or?
Don't technically have to.
Okay.
Wouldn't hurt if you want to.
Well, make it official.
Make it official, Jean.
I make a motion to have a use permit for ten dollars.
Temporary use.
Temporary, yeah.
A proposed one.
Temporary, yeah.
Because we have to do the official with the resolution. And to draw up an ordinance.
And draw up an ordinance for the next meeting.
Okay.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Item fourteen, City of Cambridge Volunteer Policy.
This is the policy we went through last month that I had put together. And then we had talked about that there was one city I had looked at that didn't allow a court-appointed community service. And you had asked me to put that into this policy. Well, I couldn't remember which city that was, and I couldn't find their policy.
So you had a great one, huh?
So I just tried to put something very simple. I don't know if it's going to work or not. You can tell me that or not. Under definitions, I put F for volunteer for court-appointed community service and defined what court-appointed community service was. And then under number three, I put volunteer for court-appointed community service. Because of staff limitations, the city does not allow volunteers for court-appointed community service. And that's all I put. I don't know if that's enough. I don't remember exactly what that other city had. And I couldn't find another city that, that had.
Wasn't that in hard copy in our packet?
Some of them were. I don't remember, I don't think, I think I looked at all of them that were in that proposal. I went back and looked at Weezer, Payette, Fruitland, Middleton, Emmett, Caldwell, Nampa, Boise Star, and Middleton. So is there another name you can think of that?
I think what you've done works.
I think it should.
I mean, you spelled it out.
Pretty simple.
Explained why we're limited and why we're not going to do it. And I think we're covered, in my opinion.
So I think that was the only change that you guys were asking for, so.
Yep.
It's ready to be considered for approval.
Okay. Do we need a motion on that one? Yeah. Action item.
Make a motion to approve the City of Cambridge volunteer program, or volunteer policy, excuse me.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, item fifteen, Del Rey, you're in charge of it. It's called a jurn. Could you make a motion, please?
Aye, I move the jurn.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, the jurn. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks, Del Rey.
Okay.